So, we are reconciling. And the only thing I believe we have different, you know, there is so little, I didn't even bring it with me because I can memorize. It's public works. Yeah, that's just the. Not that we have a difference. We don't have, but we should, we can talk about that. Yeah. So there's two differences and one non-difference that we all have to make a decision. So we are. DPW. And we were a difference on the part-time loan. And salt. The board of select, the select board said to go with last year's numbers on both of those and the. Finance committee said to go with the department's requests. Accurate on the salt. We had, you know, and everyone can chime in, I'll, I'll just start with where, where are the ones different, right? So I'll give you what I think our thoughts, our thought were. And if I'm different, everyone else can speak up and tell you. Uh, we went with the, we'll start with the part-time payroll number, we went with the. The thirteen, seven thirty based on past use. If you look at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one as well as nineteen twenty. They haven't used. Best they did was probably thirty percent of that number. And we've, in this year also, the under, understanding it was still only February first and we're at March sixteen. There was only eleven fifteen years, we felt there was enough room. Enough adequate room to find even further requests. Utilizing last year's number. That accurate. Board.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's our take.
Well, our take was that. Given the fact that they were looking to increase. The hourly rate for the commercial drivers. And not be. Real comfortable with the climate change and how much that affects the snows, the plowings, the salt and all of that fun stuff. We're more comfortable going with the higher rate. To give Dennis the ability to hire the people he needed at a competitive rate. And to cover whatever may come up.
I will say, and this is where our differences, I believe there's room to do that. With this thirteen seven, based on what we've used historically. The last two years combined, we're only talking thirty-four hundred dollars of use. Out of a budget that, you know, thirteen, seven thirty this year, and I don't, I don't know what the year before was, probably somewhere within twelve thousand. Out of a total, probably somewhere around twenty-two, twenty-four thousand dollars, we used three thousand dollars. In the last two years. We're also. And I, and I'll say this is my opinion. Multiple departments have said they have plans on what they want to do and want to hire. We know we're not finding people to hire. I haven't seen any, any evidence that those plans can come to fruition under the world, and this is just my opinion, this isn't everyone else's. I haven't seen any plans and this is throughout the town, it's not just here. But there are people to bring in and people to hire. Police, public works, it's obviously, it is. Lack of people. So. And I, and I always say this at reconciliation, I have no quarms. Fawns. The two groups going in with different numbers. Some people do, I believe it represents to the people. That we looked at it, we talked about it, there's different opinions, there's different thoughts, there's different beliefs. So if we don't agree, I, it doesn't bother me, I don't. Doesn't matter who's wrong or right, some, the people will vote, people will tell us, and we'll go with that. So if, if we don't reconcile, it doesn't break my heart.
Are you willing to split the difference?
If you know my Dennis is here tonight, ask him.
Go for it, Dennis.
No, I.
Support your.
I'd just share with you that the increase in the salt account isn't an increased volume of salt.
We're only on, we'll get to solve it, we're only at hard time, let's solve one problem at a time.
Hard time is, is because we haven't had anybody on during the summer months in the last few years. I'd like to get somebody on in the summer months and our winter drivers that we use are being paid fifteen dollars an hour, and that's what it's been for probably the last fifteen, eighteen years. Fellas that are working at that position, full-time with benefits are making closer to twenty dollars, twenty, twenty-four dollars, twenty-five dollars an hour. So if you try to bring somebody in without benefits, we should be closer than twenty-five dollars an hour for, for a call driver like that, to try to attract somebody. And, and Chairman Douglas, I hear you loud and clear, you know, we, we both know we've been trying to build positions at public works for a year and a half before we finally got one. You know, so I, I get it, I get it. We were fortunate with COVID. When we were down a driver or two, we worked around that. I spent the winter in a powder.
No, in, in big picture. We've been overtaxing people in this community. You look at what our fund balance is at the end of every year, it is a significant amount. And if we don't find, and that's just taking a loan from the people for free. And that's. That's what this has been, it's what we've done in many departments and I'm, me personally, I'm. I lose a lot of battles, but.
So Dennis, are you saying that? Given the current situation. Are you having a hard time finding buyers of drivers at fifteen dollars an hour?
No, I'm saying I'm having a harder time finding drivers, period.
Period.
And the ones I have are reluctant, I'm beating on the door, pretty happy to give them to committee drivers.
And, and because of that, you're driving.
Right.
On the weekends.
Of the driving twenty-four seven.
And, and the reason for the request for the summer personnel is because that's the only time the drivers are allowed to take time off?
To take, take time off and we get into our larger projects. And so we need, we need to focus it.
Yeah.
To, you know, if, without delivering too much, but when you get in doing a road project, you end up putting a couple fellows out flagging. You put a guy in a truck, there's three people right there. And we've got an operator, a couple fellows laying pipes, we're up to six, six, seven fellows on a job site. And in the summer months, we usually have four or five of us around, four or five gentlemen there. And you think twenty-five an hour for a non-benefit position will do it? I, I, it'll, it'll be more attractive than it is right now, yes, I think it could help, I think it could help.
I don't think the arguments that were against either one of those things. We believe the pile of money is there today. To do those things.
So what you're saying is that you don't have to increase the budget because the, the extra money's there to cover his expenses.
For the last two years, we've spent a total of thirty-four hundred dollars. Today, and I don't know where he is after February one, I don't, let's just say. Did the same as last year, that's forty-six hundred dollars. It would just double last year, and there was a budget of thirteen, seven, third. And so that's twenty-five thousand dollars over two years and we spent four thousand dollars. Believe there's room to, that's my take, I believe there's room to give that money. And hire.
It's not, I, I agree with, and I've been an advocate since I've been on the board. I do not think that we should have. A surplus at the end of every year of five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars of the people's money. That we wrote over, I just don't believe in that, and it is. If you go and get a loan, there's interest on that, if we charge taxes and you don't pay on time, there's interest on that. Just because it's us, people out there are working and paying these bills, and I feel very strong about that. So, I think, as far as Dennis, I think he's great, and I, I do trust his judgment, but when the money hasn't been used consistently for two years. I think we're fine this year.
So I think the one bit for me here is, um, the raise he's proposed makes sense to me, and it's the most tangible part about that line item. Um, because again, there's a lot of uncertainty around. Uh, whether or not we can even bring someone in right now, right? So, I mean, if we were to give folks raises, which, I mean, if they're making fifteen dollars an hour, that's. I mean, it seems like we might be able to come up with a number, uh, maybe not including. Or I guess maybe a little bit higher than thirteen, but I, I still think it's going to be less than that twenty this day, if that makes sense. I guess I'm looking at the, what's tangible right now, what's, what we can actually grab onto.
So, so Dennis, do you? I guess, so why in the past, if we've had a surplus? Did you not feel comfortable to raise the salary? For part-time, given the fact that there were some extra funds there, is that, I mean, I don't understand logistically how.
It, it's, it's just a matter of trying to figure out the hours. The dollars per hour rate with the number of hours I would use part-time. I, I don't know in a given winter how many hours I'm going to have with winter months.
Right.
So historically, what I've tried to do, when I did have summer help, is I waited until after the winter, see where my part-time comp was. To know why I could schedule somebody, for first, whether I would try to get somebody to come on board for summer months, and then what I had left for funding. On that position. Timely, it's been a high school age, somebody kind of local like that. It's, it's. It's a crystal ball and Moose is clear.
Yeah.
And I, I'll, I'll try to. You know, it's best I can describe it and try to explain my, my, you know, the defensiveness to the, to the proposal.
If you had the same amount in there this year's budget, this current budget. Would that enable you to raise somebody? A one, one driver or one part that you call in with that money that's in there, that forty, thirty or forty percent that's left over each year?
Yes, that, that, yes, the, the, the winter, what you see right now is what's being used during the winter only. Because I have not had anybody on during the summer months. If I could get somebody on for the summer, forty hours a week for. Three months, would be what, twelve weeks, twelve, fourteen weeks? So yes, the answer to your question is it would, it would increase the pay for the winter help, yes, for winter part-time driver.
You're, you're going from twenty-five, from fifteen to twenty-five, that's a two-thirds and sixty-six percent increase, which is, I think, pretty substantial. And I'm not sure that. Cutting it back to the thirteen plus the summertime person would cover all of that.
So if you take seven, thirteen, seven, thirty divided by fifteen, that's nine hundred hours, that's when, yeah. You bump, you take that nine hundred hours, this means fully utilize that twenty-five dollars an hour is twenty-three thousand. So, twenty is sort of in the middle, basically, when I look at it. You're probably not going to afford nine hundred hours, but you could afford to hire somebody for seven.
But you're not, he's not looking to pay twenty-five for summer help. No, I think that's, I think it's strictly wind driver, twenty-five.
Oh, I.
And then the, the summer person would be in a different.
Okay. All right, a different skill set.
Yeah. But still, I mean, something like, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a. And I know it's different every single year, but if there's over an eight-year run, you gotta have.
I mean, I understand the concern about overtaxing people, but. I always tend to be on the conservative side, I'd rather have more. And not have to worry so much about, God, where am I going to, what bucket am I going to take it out of to cover whatever line item is short because. We estimated wrong. But we haven't had to do that for a long time. You sure? I'm sure. We haven't done that.
Well, you know, it, I, I've said this before, the last two years of unprecedented utilizing labor and do work, you know, do work. I think Dennis's point is, is just to summarize it the way I think of it, is summer help, if we haven't had. Majority of our people do take vacation in the summer because they can't turn winter storms and get a call. Um, and that coupled with additional work, you could see to. Plowing needs it. In the winter. Based on numbers, if you were to continue. Just hire fifteen dollars an hour for a summer for twelve weeks, it's about seventy, seven, five hundred-ish.
That doesn't account benefits though, does it?
No, this would just be part-time work, bike is not included, so we got to add that.
But you'd still have your payroll tax, you might have med C. Social Security, unemployment compensation, the whole nine parts, which.
That coupled with the ones you're driving, which Dennis is alluding to, at twenty-five dollars an hour, that range.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, everybody's got a point here.
And we're right.
Caution, we need to be careful, we unutilize department budget. We didn't have a choice. But coming out of COVID. Um, I, I really think what we're presenting is what we need. Um, in some areas of, obviously, we. There's unknowns. Storms are unknown. Public safety sometimes is unknown. And so, you know, turnover, there's so many different variables. There's. It's a decision that, that we're gonna have to make, it's, it's, it's sixty-three hundred dollars plus. So if, if, if it's down to what we used last year, that's fine, but I can't understand. You know, what, what Dennis has played out as well as all the other departments, um, if it's less than that, we'll make do. But, but we don't plan just to throw money at the pot and tax, taxpayer.
Well, the only thing I got to say is again, I. It convinced me a little that I think the people should have, I think fifteen dollars an hour is pretty low. I absolutely agree with that, but I think. Or, I don't know, I could run it for the last four years, one year we had nine hundred thousand left over, this year was different with COVID, we can't. But before, one year it was nine hundred thousand, we gave five hundred and some thousand back to the people in taxes, we added it to the budget. The next year, it was five, six, seven hundred thousand over. This last year, it was a thousands again, and I don't know what it will be this year, it's quite an amount. And, uh. This year I understand COVID, but. It's consistent, it's been consistent, that's what I have a problem with.
But the question is, what are we not getting done in the summer that we could if we had this position stay? Well, fortunate for us last summer, we didn't get toward paving because Perker wasn't available. Couldn't want to help. And then across the board. I couldn't anyway, right?
Yeah.
So we stayed up for some of the long time.
So in that example, the opportunity cost is, you know, additional road.
And what's the value, additional road make, yes.
Make, yeah.
I can't say paving because it's a different line. But just, but you have to do prep work before Perker can do the road, good, right?
So twenty-five dollars an hour. At thirty staff hours per week for part-time winter first. Over seventeen weeks, because let's say winter goes seventeen weeks. You're talking like twelve thousand dollars. We know we're not using seventeen straight weeks in winter amount. Don't know what the number is. I mean, but we've experienced this, you know, I count, that's December through March, seventeen weeks. Um, that's twelve thousand dollars at thirty hours a week. That is probably, some weeks he uses that, some weeks he doesn't. Um, it's, it's a, and that still comes in under that thirteen. I would think it's fair to say you don't use, gosh, I would push towards fifty percent of that amount. If you're looking at thirty hours, staff hours a week for part-timers in the winter. Seventeen weeks, I. I still think there's probably there to get summertime and be healthy benefit, healthy rates. Seven hundred and fifty dollars a week for thirty hours a week, it's twenty-five bucks an hour. And there's no way we do seventeen straight weeks of having a part-time habit.
So there, yeah, so you're basically saying that Dennis do what he needs to do, but we can get it out of the surplus.
We can get it out of his budget, out of the thirteen, seven, thirty, the same number as last.
But Dennis might also say Dennis has been out there on the road during a lot of this, and he can hire somebody to do that, isn't that going to also bump up the part-time numbers? Because now you're paying an extra body, not somebody who's sitting there, I mean, not that you sit there, Dennis. Yeah. So I mean, it argues if he's, if you've got the ability to haul somebody in at twenty-five bucks an hour, that gets Dennis off the road where he shouldn't be to begin with. Which to me says that part-time line shouldn't be.
Why shouldn't he be?
No, I mean.
Well, you should be driving around figuring where the hot spots are directing people as opposed to doing it yourself.
The plows and stuff, that's what I'm saying, you shouldn't. I mean, that's. I thought.
The money's been there, we haven't used it, fact still remains, doesn't matter, if Dennis wants to come out of the truck, we don't use it. We have an updated figure for that at the down, on that line. With one thousand one hundred and fifty, we use. We get about one use.
As of six months. As of March ninth, if, if the reports that we can run is department heads. Were at like eleven, five, eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Left in the line?
Yes.
So you've used twenty-two hundred bucks.
Right.
Here to be.
We, we haven't, we haven't used a lot of it.
No.
I understand that.
Let's create anybody. In the truck.
Can you get me next year? But if you have eleven thousand five hundred, that's going to get you pretty close to. Right?
Eleven thousand five hundred, last three years combined.
Yeah.
Just saying.
I understand everybody's input, I really do, so I'll, you know. I have to put together a budget with what I hope for theoretically and. How it looks on paper with a, a part-time person. Figure it out and add it up, and that's where I came. From fund money for, for, if in a regular winter or a more normal winter, I use stuff for part-time. Funding in, in the winter, I wouldn't even think about something, oh, last couple of years we haven't used it, so I'd like to get back getting somebody on in the summer to help. For our projects and covering vacations and that type of work.
Did you see ten thousand dollars in the last year?
Nine.
Um, forty-five, yeah, ninety-five. Over the last three months, well, three and, two and three quarters, right? Because we haven't finished this. And I don't know what was in that line, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and, you know, because it doesn't show in our, our budget.
So what do you feel about splitting the difference again?
Six more. So you're talking.
Around seventeen or so.
Yeah, seventeen-ish.
Anyone feedback?
I'm fine with that, if, just, let's have a plan to use it, basically.
Yeah.
Like, you know, staffing or something, I would say, when do we start recruiting in summer and all that? Just getting an update in terms of like, is, is the salary strategy working relative to acquisition? New employees.
I mean, part of that could be part of this year's budget numbers, if we're talking about picking somebody up in May. Right? Which would up his part-time numbers come the end of the year.
I think that's, we'll see where he is at the end of the winter.
Seventeen, everybody?
Well, then twenties are for trees.
There's no real data behind any of that, it's just.
Right, that's no.
Saying, hey, we're gonna split it.
If we get help, if we get, you know, yeah, but if you don't have it there, you can't go looking for the help even.
Want to encourage the help. I, I just. Hopefully, you know, it's obviously, it's a, I know, but it'd be great to sort of start catching up on some of these cases. Other maintenance projects. Going with my core.
I am extremely confident thirteen, seven, thirty does the job.
So you're not willing to compromise, is what you're saying?
You know, they're worried that.
But the, I'm wondering. So basically Roland and I cancel each other out.
It's a hard one, it really is, it's a hard, but I, I have to stick with.
Wait.
If it hasn't been used and it's been left over year after year. That's part of the problem at the end of each cycle, so, and that adds to it. So this year, I hope it all can be used. I just think you can't string Dennis if you don't give him the funds to be able to go out and actually recruit. And not just do with. And that's to me what it's sounding like, okay, this is why you're gonna get, do what you can, if you could have done more by having a little more money in the budget, too bad. Well, what happens if Dennis hires somebody, you know, what he needs, he actually gets somebody on and he goes over budget?
And find someone in his department, bought him through the warm on.
So he's gotta, he's gotta shift things around.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put it to seventeen, drop overtime to three thousand, does that help you in any way within your time?
That was Roland just threw out, do the seventeen, but drop overtime three thousand, does that help you in any way within your time?
Does that help me with overtime?
Having, having drivers, having, having additional drivers on the road in the winter. Do you see that gets your crews off the roads quicker during storms, because you have more on at one time? And, and I know it's a guess.
It, it's a guess, and I would have to say no, because I don't have additional plow trucks to put those other people in. I'm putting in trucks that my full-time staff isn't. So if I get any, if I have a gentleman out. That's what they're driving, it's the truck will do.
So we're only, we're, we're using part-time as if we're out of, out of. People are out for whatever reason, that's when we use.
We have one, one part-time comes in every single storm. If I use additional part-time, it depends on the size of the storm, the size of the storm and the significance of it. Do I put two pickups out? Do I put two pickups and a one-ton out, plus our seven plow trucks? Do I pull somebody in and put the grader out with them? Because it's a, it's an icy storm and I've got to scrape roads and, and bear up the ice. Is it after a storm? That was tremendous, like, we, we haven't seen him in a while, I get it, where we saw that almost thirty inches. And we're out with my full-time guys hauling snow and nobody's setting banks, nobody's clearing walks. So I've got two sidewalk machines stacked and put into it. And I, and I agree, I haven't used it for a few years. I understand that a hundred percent, I also understand that thirteen thousand will do it with what's been going on for a few years. I just, I have to work through the numbers logistically, trying to figure my summer help, my part-time help in the winter. And, and come up with a budget figure, that's where I came up with that figure this year. Just, just want to reiterate where that number came from for Dennis, it's not that I'm trying to. Build a bigger department and have commonwealths down there of folks, it's just trying to cut grass while the snow and. Street, pave the streets, that's, that's all we're trying to do with, with my crystal ball. But again, it, no, I haven't used it. If I, if I start out July one. With somebody knowing months. And we're doing great guns, and then I get hit with a good-sized winner, I'm in the red and I've got no way to tend that back. If I've had a hard winter. Now I'm coming into spring and early summer, then I don't hire somebody part-time in summer months.
Total.
And you've already mentioned, well, how does Dennis balance his budget, he has to cut someplace else, this is one of those areas that I kind of reeled in sometimes. To try to keep my bottom line from going over.
It's an.
I can control this, I can't control the amount of salt I've got to put down. How much fuel use I have and the cost per gallon and things like that, and I can stop hiring the part-time. And we'll go without. In that area of help.
I thought highway was the one that could go over budget. With the state, but it, it, wasn't there something there that you could without?
Ruth, I think, I think you're on to something there.
Yeah.
But I've never worked for anybody that's told me, never mind your bottom line.
Well.
In my career, in my career, my bottom line has always been in the black.
I'm not saying that, but if it's an exceptional winter, I think there's something. I'm not saying that, but if it's an exceptional winter, I think there's something that, that highway department is the only department that's allowed to go over their budget according to the state.
Correct.
I think it is correct.
But the same time, you know, people can only work somewhere else.
Public safety is an area that could get, could be get overrun. Public safety is the reason why.
But that doesn't change the fact that you've still got to rob Peter to pay Paul to get it done. Right?
If, if you have to.
Yeah.
Definitely have to do it. But as I said, it's, it's unpredictable. As we know, we're budgeting, you know, sometimes eighteen months out and inflation is a factor. Storms are a factor.
Definitely. Was this considered a hard one at Dennis?
Probably for you folks know, for our public works department, it was weekends and evenings in fourteen, in fourteen days. You know, we do our month, are we the reports every two weeks? In fourteen days, we were in nine times, other than seven to three thirty. Just, I, I'm, I'm not crying to state the fact. Okay, that's all I'm saying. We were in nine times in additional to a regular fourteen, a regular ten-day worker.
And it showed you on the staff of sidewalk twenty-nine with two days because you didn't map out the whole, the entire road.
And, and it, and it was when the storm fell. You know, storm came in Thursday night, all day Friday. We got done at like early Saturday morning, sent the boys home and then instead of coming in Sunday morning, it became early Monday morning, it started on workforce. That's it.
You could say like a sweet storm is a lot worse than a storm.
Oh, absolutely. We're still running the same lane miles with our trucks. In the same time behind the wheel, but we're using so much more product. So I'd rather plow, plow all the time and have to put down the salt in that because we take so much more salt to try to, try to beat it up. Get the ice off the road. Snowplows, we can plow twelve inches off and it's gone and it's bare road, we're gold. But when it's three inches of, of snow and then it's sleet, freezing rain and it's cold ground. First, we're plowing one inch on the ground to try to keep it there. So it doesn't adhere to that pavement, freeze on, turn to ice. And we're treating it every time, not just at the end of the storm. We're treating it every pass-through.
I, I, I'd rather have vacancy factor in a couple of departments than deal worrying about three thousand bucks a year at least.
I'd love to have vacancy factors in every single one of them.
I know.
Ruth, just have a next one.
Um, I mean, this is, you know, obviously it has been evident this year and we still have ten thousand dollars thereabouts in this account. So why didn't we make any effort this winter to alleviate some of those problems? That, some of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alleviate what problem?
Well, in terms of, uh, you know, getting another driver, um, trying to alleviate some of those issues with staff or personnel, as you said. Like you have ten thousand dollars in your account right now, right? And this ends June thirty.
Yeah.
So how come, and you've had this since July one last year, why haven't you brought another staff member on in that time using that ten thousand dollars you have right now?
Matt, I did, I just tried to explain, I, I didn't have anybody during the summer months. I didn't put anybody on during the summer month because I've got to wait to see what I use up in the winter months. And I didn't have anybody to draw to for the winter months, except the gentleman I've used for about the last twelve years. It's in his mid to late seventies now.
Is it junior?
When I pick up the phone and call some, yes, it is. When I pick up the phone and call somebody and say, well, yeah, okay, I'll get out of bed, but how much are you paying? No, I'm not getting out of bed for fifteen bucks an hour driving in a snowstorm in a nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand plow truck. It's not going to do that. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's why I haven't spent the money this year. I've got nobody to draw. My mechanic's out in the storm. We got a breakdown. He's in, he, he's in the garage working that problem set. We can, you know, it's, it's up to you folks. How you want to fund, you know, it's entirely up to you. We're doing all we can do to keep up to it right now. And I'm just sharing ideally that this is what I'd like to have for funding to make keep happening and keep up to the current standards of more, more plumbing tool and treating roads.
So Roland, the overtime thing, you're good with that theory?
Yeah.
So Matt, you're the last one.
I kind of like Roland's overtime.
But you want to go that way after here?
What's, what's, let me back up. What's the difference when you, you just, you're probably watching me out.
Yeah, but if you look at, again, precedent from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we spent twenty-nine thousand on overtime in twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty and we're asking for forty thousand this year. Granted, we spent forty-four thousand last year, but that's because we don't have anybody to do the work.
No requests.
Forty-four requests.
But if their base goes down, their own time, they're going to.
It's still not, do you think it's gonna be?
I, I don't know. I just wonder how much.
I think, I think Dennis is explaining why I need that. It would be just an arbitrary number up there. Um, I need to stick with what we did last year or increase it to one. If you give us what we had last year, Dennis, of course, is, is going to work with it. But because things are unpredictable, this department especially, it's going to have to drop from somewhere else. And we've been very weak, at least what we're budgeting, the numbers that we have. Whether or not we overspend or underspend, we're always going to underspend, we're never going to overspend. You have to make.
Well, I think the other thing you ought to keep in, to me, what I think about is six thousand dollars is a point six cents difference on the middle rate. I mean, sorry, I think that's people couldn't afford that. Granted, the budget is what the budget needs to be to run the town. But I think in the big picture, I, I understand point six here, penny there, it all adds up. But at this point in time, I think that's a pretty minor concession to make and to help Dennis run his department and get what he needs.
This entire eleven million dollar budget is built on.
Oh, I know. That's what I just said.
Right.
Yeah.
The whole thing to get where we are today is built on items just like that.
But we're talking just two items between the two committees that we have a difference of opinion on. Which will make a difference.
Strong.
Well, I'm just saying the, the rest of the budget, we're all agreed on, agree. It's eleven million, but this is again, between those two budget items, that's one point six cents. Difference on the middle rate, which in my opinion, Dennis is worth it.
So Matt, they threw out. I'm going to go with a question.
Yeah, sorry.
You're the last one. Make sure I put seventeen thousand. Split the difference. I need something from you.
I'm okay with seventeen.
So now we're two, two.
Doesn't the town manager get the type right?
He gets nothing.
I got it done with two hours.
Marty's not online or anything issue?
No.
No. It's why we have five select people.
So it stays at thirteen seven thirty, thirty to twenty thousand over two different numbers.
Over the twenty.
Over the twenty-five hours?
Yeah, we'll stick with the twenty. Maybe that was at the town meeting.
Can we wait for the next round of votes?
All right.
Next one is salt. And before we even begin to discuss it. So we had gone sticking with the last year number versus the request. You guys went with the request. Derek just pulled up and I wrote in that as a bounce, so take that two-one number. And I've crossed it out now. I think it said thirty-three, twenty-three. What was the number?
The salt one?
Yeah. Whatever it is.
Which is.
We've now spent seventy-four thousand, that would be eight thousand. So um, I'm not as inclined. I mean, that's pretty darn close and knowing, knowing where things are going, I'm not as inclined to hold on to last year's number at this time.
David, if I may, please, just, just to share with.
Don't go lower than seventy-four because you could change my mind, Dan.
I just want to share with you because I know how it's going to look. The salt I have on order right now, because Portland has been out where we get it from, when it comes in, I'll probably be in the red.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't want people thinking that to make it look good and there's no more snow coming. We're down to what is almost bare bones in our shed right now. We've got enough to feel kind of comfortable. Okay, don't get me wrong. But it's one of these deals that doesn't spoil. So I try to keep some on hand. Portland, our, our depot will be, fires salt through. Is presently empty. The boat came in last night. They're offloading today. Tomorrow or Friday, I should see a delivery. And it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of sixty-five hundred, sixty-eight hundred dollars. So it's probably going to go in the red and I don't want you. That son of a gun did it just so he could prove his point. No, it's been ordered for about three weeks on the way in.
Yes, we'll have the most full salt shed in August of anyone around.
No, it's not the case.
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to try to make it easy. I'm going to propose to go to the ninety.
Right.
No problem. Matt, at least give an opinion.
Um, well, I looked at all the bids for the last three years about on GP pod's website. Um, twenty nineteen, it was fifty-one ninety delivered, fifty-one picked up. Twenty twenty, it was fifty-two eighty-six delivered, fifty-two picked up. And this year it was fifty-eight seventy-three, fifty-eight picked up. I think it's seventy-three, so we're looking at a six-dollar increase over the last year. If we're doing sixty-eight hundred for this period, so what is that, a hundred and fifteen tons, Dennis? Is that, what is that metric? You said sixty-eight hundred dollars total for this next shipment, right?
Approximately, yeah. Yeah, we're running about thirty tons, which is what you can put on the road at a time.
So I mean, it hasn't been.
By gross vehicle, by gross vehicle weight, we'll get about thirty tons.
I mean, it hasn't been increasing drastically over the last three years and we certainly had trucking issues over the last two years, to say the least. Um, inflation's been around as well. I mean, I don't see the numbers proving out and I mean, they don't go out to bid until April thirtieth for the next round. Uh, from what GP pod's saying, so we're not actually going to know what the cost of salt is until, uh, May twentieth or thereabouts.
Matt, does that factor in seventy percent inflation since February? April is really, really inflation started kicking in.
But we also have a special deal with GP card. This isn't like we're paying.
But I'm saying, but, but.
Four.
Eight thousand year contract. So I'm saying inflationary pressures since April. Um, and of course you know, we're over right now anyways, whether it's usage, volume or just increased costs, just like gas, we're not going to know when the contract comes out. Well, we had six percenting, uh, inflation by what, last October, I think already, right? But we were still three plus since April. Between April and say fall, yeah.
Dennis, would you say you're seeing more ice storms now than you've been requiring more salt?
I can, I know. We're three to one.
Okay.
I just wanted Matt's opinion.
I'm not budgeting.
We're, we're good.
Okay.
I just wanted to hear it though. All right. So those were our two disagreements. Down to one disagreement. We are now going to listen to the manager, um, because there's an item that may have to go on the warrant in regards to our debt service. So he wants to bring us up to speed with something that of us have given a formal thing. Matt go off in anywhere somewhere.
If you email me your PowerPoint, I can unload it.
It's, it's not, it's not really, so.
Or you could bring.
Can you go to the presentation on public share when we set up for budgetings? It's a budget. You have one budget? Yeah. Also, in the, if you have your booklets. It's in the memo. All around my. Okay, uh, when we initially did the presentation in February for voting board and the finance committee, we talked about where we are with our bond. We found out this past winter that two of our bonds are callable.
This one never gets used, so.
All right.
You sure it's the chair?
So two of the bonds are callable, which means that we can pay them off, the upper portion. Funds that are not callable are by agreement, we have to build the terms so investors can make money. So presented in this budget, the initial proposal was taking a look, is look at two particular bonds, one BNY Mellon bond, which is basically municipal complex and Gorm savings bond, which, uh, had to do with sidewalks and part of the complex. So highlighted in green on the slide presented in the booklets, uh, we got fiscal year twenty-three, all of that is budgeted. Also included in this budget is paying off all of Gorm savings bond. So it's clear, it's clear twenty-four and twenty-five, in addition to everything high and green. And fiscal year twenty-six for the BNY Mellon bond. That's included in the budget that you've been working at since February. During the presentation, um, I asked, uh, both committees, I'm sorry, the committee and the select board to consider paying off the complete BNY Mellon bond. Once we kind of figure out what our revenues would be, get a little bit better, you know, an idea, uh, where you agree on the budget, where the county and the school may be coming in. Most importantly though, what our state revenue sharing projection would be. If we paid off what was proposed in the budget initially, our fund balance would be within the select board's policy of sixteen point seventeen percent. That's, that's my projection. Of course, we don't know what the school's going to be right now, or if anything else changes. If I did the numbers today, if I tell you those, the state revenue projections came out yesterday. And it's showing a four hundred thousand dollar increase to the town, which is what we expect. However, there's a lot of caution out there. Because years ago, they didn't give what they projected accounts did. With these numbers and where we're seeing the county come out, we have an idea of the school, although, you know, they're, they're still deciding in this state revenue projection, excise tax, our projection is, I think, as good as it's going to be. Um, I took a look at what if we paid off, in addition to what we have in the budget, fiscal year twenty-five with the BNY Mellon bond. If we did, I'm projecting our fund balance should remain above fifteen percent still. If we decided to pay off the complete BNY Mellon bond into Gorm saving fund, our fund balance should be approximately twelve to thirteen percent. I mean, we tied towards thirteen. School and what the select board would like to go, could be a little bit lower. What else is going down below twelve percent? I would like, uh, this group to consider what we, how should we proceed forward? My recommendation is to pay off both bonds in total. By doing so, we'd save over a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in interest over that period of fiscal year twenty-six. And we'd also. And we'd also, uh, have much more flexibility in next year's budget and beyond. If things get tight or if we the, the town selects to, you know, take on a bigger project, whatever, it gives us that flexibility. Uh, after talking to our finance director and, and many people on the select board here and others, um, I, I think the comfort level is there. Real no, no real need to be over the upper fund balance, I think. Now, what is the fund balance? MMA and GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, their, their recommendation is to stay at sixteen point seven percent. Sixteen point seven percent is two months. Two months out of call, that's sixteen point seven percent to cover your operational expenses primarily. What's the difference between twelve percent and sixteen point seven percent over two weeks? I mentioned before, when we did budget presentation, given times, uh, on the new session, I would imagine. Uh, we've been very cautious in spending. Um, we've been very careful. We, going into the next fiscal year, if we decide to pay this whole thing off and goes out to this room, we, we spend when necessary. Um, and there's areas within the budget we don't have to do any of this. Um, if things get tight within the first few months, we'll start collecting taxes in November. So with all that being said, in our comfort level, I would recommend paying both bonds off. But I just wanted to bring this up for discussion, uh, because our public hearing is on April twenty-first for the budget portion. And it's gonna be the public hearing, that's what the articles, that's our service. If, uh, whatever we decide, or, or you decide, if the town decides, um, we will notify to bondholders, uh, the day after, tell them to get that process started. There's time requirements, people who start paying this off to get everything.
So that'll be from when you think.
That's when it become callable.
So I just think that, like you said, if there was a deep recession and we had to lay, if things happened and we had to lay people off. We've only got a two-month cushion there anyway. And if we take and we pay even all of it off, it just shortens it by two weeks and we hope that doesn't happen, but.
But it's just guidance.
It's just guidance.
But the goal would be to bring it back up as soon as possible. To stay within the select board policy.
Finance committee is in favor of paying one.
So we've had a workshop a couple of months back. And the majority at the time was, um, in favor with what came forward. So we need to talk a little bit, um. I'm all in favor of paying them off. I, I'm fine. That's been my position since.
I want to hear what Roland's.
Yeah. Yeah, I've got nothing to say. I mean, everyone knows what I've been saying. Um, chips in. So.
I think we, I said at our workshop, we wanted to wait and see what was going on right first. So, I mean, Ruth and I just had budget county last week, uh, it's probably actually gonna be a decrease if they approve all their ARPU stuff from last year. Um, if not, I mean, max flat, so it's not like there's gonna be an increase there. Our only variable, like Derek said, is the school budget right now, which could be big, it could be small, who really knows? It's unfortunate that we don't know that yet.
Right, it's very unfortunate.
Uh, and the fact that revenue sharing is going up, which is fantastic as well. I'm totally fine with.
Would that have been announced too? I'm sorry, you said, the schools have been announced also yesterday, their share? I mean, nothing.
I, I haven't heard it.
I didn't know if you, anyone had seen it.
Oh, I see.
They're ready for their share, because see, they get, they were anticipating so much if they, because that was, have they increased the schools also? Because their budgets.
Sorry, Matt, no.
I agree. I mean, isn't this year, it's the year to finally up to contributing the fifty-five percent that's been legislated for years and years and years?
Supposed to be.
Yes.
Where were they at? They weren't even in the forty, they were only mid-forties.
Right.
Was it really? Oh, okay.
So I guess where I'm going with that is I'm finding a painful thing. Um, I mean, we have one variable left out there, but that's a big variable. Right, but I don't think it's going to be as much of a roadblock, um, given all the other dominos of, in our, in our way.
Well, if they give us figures, which we fast for, it would help.
Yeah, depending on what we saw at MOE meeting, with what our share is and where they potentially come out, we're gonna be fine.
Yeah.
So I mean, if they spend to the max, we're not gonna like that so much because it'll be tax rate. But we don't have debt. Flexible. That's gonna, I might say three, it gives us flexibility, about eighty thousand dollars next year. Over two years.
Just so you guys, finance committee, um, we went to that meeting last week, you guys got, did Derek? A little bit. Yes, they did their MOE, their maintenance effort budget, which wasn't, it wasn't horrible for us. Big question mark is, um, this, the super was supposed to present this past Monday, but we canceled it because of the driver debt. Um, his recommendations based on filled in staff's request, which is about one point two. And there's decisions that need to be made with buses. So those are the large things laying out there. How does that play out, you know, as many as nine buses? And one point two. Normally, building principles combined ask for somewhere around one seventy-five to two hundred. This time it's one point two, so. It'll be interesting to hear tomorrow night. We won't be there. So everyone's in favor of all of it? You guys are, yeah, makes sense. And I, in, and we'll talk about it. Twelve, I've, I've changed my ways over, for a long time, I was all about that. Two months, but after surviving a pandemic and never having to touch that two-month reserve, I think we're a little high.
So you can teach home dogs new tricks, that's encouraging.
It's to give more money back to the people, yeah. That's that, Jack. So you guys know the change that we're gonna do the money items on the twenty-first.
So we know the only difference we have is two different figures on part-time and how it affects, uh, by the.
And that can change up till the twenty-first? Well, it can change at town meeting, but we can, we, we're gonna do it again.
Yeah.
We have to come through during the public hearing, we have to go through a made recognition, so we're not, we're not done yet.
So I'm probably paying for the warrant, um, for the budget part of it. That'll be the only difference.
And that's the twenty-first, it's what, six thirty?
Yeah.
High school.
No, the twenty-first is here.
The seventh and the twenty-first will be here.
Oh, okay. Both at six thirty?
Yes. Done, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.